Please join Councilmember Cano in the Pledge Allegiance and Invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father God, we have so much to be thankful for as we gather together for the final council meeting this fiscal year. A year ago, when we decided the current budget, we had no idea of the storms that would come. And yet, through your grace and mercy, we have made it through to finish this year well. Tonight, we will decide on the budget for the fiscal year 21. We humbly ask for your continued favor and provision to beat all expenditures, ensure the stability of all revenue streams, and for the timely completion of our capital improvement projects. Give us wisdom to navigate the year ahead, to grow our city, serve our residents, and protect those who protect us. Lord, our nation needs healing. Break the power of sickness and fear related to COVID. Help us to follow your commandment to love our neighbors as ourselves. Give us discernment to know when it's time to listen for understanding and when it's time to speak up. We ask for the divine protection as written in Psalm 91 over our police, fire, and military, that you would keep them safe and secure from all danger, seen and unseen, known and unknown. As we look at the history of Goodyear, when the thunder roars, we ride the storm. For that, we give you all praise. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I particularly like that last phrase. I think we'll all remember that tonight. We have no communication items, so our City Clerk Darcy Kraken will then go on and explain how you can participate in tonight's meeting.
Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, city council meetings are closed to the public. Our residents may still have several ways to address the council. They may submit their questions or comments to publiccomments@goodyearaz.gov, and they can view the meetings using Facebook, YouTube, or the link from our agendas using Granicus. The public may always contact the mayor and council at any time by sending an email to gycouncil@goodyearaz.gov.
All right, now is the time for someone that's at this meeting tonight to participate. There is none. All right, thank you. Will the City Clerk please read consent agenda items one through 11 by title only?
Number one, approve the minutes. Number two, approve the budget transfers for fiscal year 2020. Number three, adopt Resolution Number 2020-2060 approving an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Phoenix for reimbursements for costs of park and ride security upgrades pursuant to grant Number AZ-2020-016-00 and providing authorization, direction, and an effective date. Number four, approve the Regional Public Transit Authority, I T A Transit Services Amendment 9. Number five, amend Stipulation Number Five of the stipulations of approval of the Final Plan for Goodyear Planned Regional Center Parcel 12. Number six, adopt Resolution Number 2020-2052, designating the chief fiscal officer for officially submitting the fiscal year 2021 expenditure limitation report to the Arizona Auditor General. Number seven, adopt Resolution Number 2020-2064, authorizing the city manager or her designee to execute the license agreement between the City of Goodyear and Crown Castle Fiber LLC, a New York limited liability company, providing for the city manager or her designee to execute amendments to the license agreement associated with minor scrivener's errors and to enter into separate agreements for in-kind exchanges of fiber conduit and/or joint trenching for the city's use. Number eight, approve and authorize execution of the First Amendment to the affluent discharge agreement with the Buckeye Water Conservation and Drainage District. Number nine, recognize the city council's subcommittee appointments for fiscal year 2021. Number 10, approve map of dedication for West Broadway Road subject to stipulations.
Thank you very much.
One more. Number 11, adopt Resolution Number 2020-2072 to accept $9,969,802 from the Governor's Arizona Cares Fund and authorize the city manager and/or her designee to execute all documents and to take all other steps necessary to facilitate the administration of the grant award.
Thank you, Darcy. Just for the people that are listening, your mayor side indicated that were somebody here and asked them if they wanted to speak. We do not have any citizens here this evening, so I just wanted to clarify that because there's nothing worse listening here than thinking you could be there and you have to do this process. So, does anyone in the council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? All right, can I have a motion a second to approve the consent agenda items one through 17? Do I hear a motion?
To move.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Campbell and a second from Councilman Hampton. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Stebb?
Aye.
Councilmember Pazillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right, there are two public hearings on the agenda. The first public hearing item is to consider a request to rezone 35.73 acres of Centerscape at Palm Valley Amendment Plan. I'm going to repeat this from the beginning, all right? The first public hearing item is to consider a request to rezone 35.73 acres of Centerscape at Palm Valley Amendment Planned Area Development, PAD, to the Centerscape at Palm Valley 2020 PAD. I'm opening the public hearing. Planner Christian Williams will present. Christian?
No, thank you. Whoever did that. Good evening, Mayor Lord and council. I'm here before you this evening with a request from Jeff Bliley to conduct a rezoning on a property within the city. The property is approximately 35 acres and is located south and east of the southeast corner of Bullard Avenue and McDowell Road. The property is currently zoned PAD under the Centerscape at Palm Valley Planned Area Development Amendment. And if you kind of want to know where the property is, it's located right here in this red area there. For a little history on the property, the original Centerscape development encompassed approximately 51 acres. In 2006, the property was rezoned from agricultural to planned area development, PAD, and contemplated a mixed-use commercial district known as the At Home District, PAD. A Palm Valley mixed-use commercial district is similar to the city's existing C2 general commercial district. The boundaries of the At Home District can be seen on the left side of your screen. In 2009, 39 acres of the At Home District were amended to create the Centerscape at Palm Valley Planned Area Development Amendment, which included a mix of office, retail, hotels, shops, and restaurants. This PAD did not include the 12 acres along McDowell and Bullard. These parcels have existing and future restaurant shops in sight, so that'd be your PF Chang, your Red Robin, all that good stuff. The conceptual plan in the middle of the screen are within the yellow bounded area. And today, only 35.73 acres are proposed for a rezoning. This will be called Centerscape at Palm Valley 2020 PAD and will not contain the existing commercial pads along McDowell or a three-acre parcel that is immediately northeast of the corner of Interstate 10, Papago Freeway, and Bullard Avenue. This parcel calls for a hotel development. So now that we have a little bit of history, let's talk about the latest proposal. The PAD will ultimately utilize the Goodyear's existing zoning categories. 19.2 acres of that will be general commercial C2. 11.5 acres of that will be multifamily residential, called MF24. And it also creates a flexible area that may be used to increase the boundaries of the commercial development and/or to increase the boundaries of the residential development and will be used between the MF24 residential uses and the C2 general commercial uses to allow for a portion of that five acres or all of it to be combined into either the MF24 residential or the C2 general commercial when the lots are finally created and combined. As you can see from the map, the multifamily residential portions of the development will be located on the east side of the project, adjacent to 154th Avenue, and the commercial and office uses will be located along Bullard Avenue on the west and Interstate 10 Papago Freeway on the south. To allow for additional compatible uses to be included in the C2 zoning, the PAD proposes the addition of uses such as medical laboratories, medical offices or clinics, offices for professional, administrative, clerical, or sales services, and financial institutions. The PAD prohibits uses such as adult stores, pawn shops, secondhand stores, massage parlors, tattoo studios, and after the Planning and Zoning Commission, tobacco shops were also included in that. Office buildings may extend up to a height of 88 feet, and hotel buildings may extend up to a height of 92 feet. The multifamily zoning also must yield a density of 12 units per acre or greater. The development plan also calls for element enhancements, such as pedestrian connections, a major plaza, enhanced pavers and landscaping, trail connections, integration between the commercial and multifamily residential parcels, and cohesive project names between the multifamily and commercial, which creates an intentional mixed-use and harmonious feel between the developments. To give you some additional details on the enhancements, there shall be a significant number of pedestrian connections, both major and minor, within the property and between the various uses within the property. A major pedestrian connection will be a minimum of eight feet wide and include paved paths with a combination of shade structures and shade trees, or shade trees. And the minor pedestrian connections will be a minimum of five feet wide and be paved. A major plaza, or pedestrian plaza or green space, shall be constructed in the center of the property and appear prominent from Bullard Avenue entrance. The plaza should be a minimum of 8,400 square feet and include a major shade amenity and seating. The major plaza will also be flanked on either side by a large pedestrian path, which we call the major east-west pedestrian connection. There'll be storefronts, patios, and/or have a pedestrian loop surrounding it to serve as a comfortable buffer between the entry-drive road and the users of that plaza. Sight lighting, pavers, landscape signage, design, and other community features will match that of the existing improvements already found within Centerscape at Palm Valley. And they will construct a trail just north of Interstate 10 Papago Freeway between the hotel property line and the future City of Goodyear Wellspring Park Basin. As the multifamily parcel interfaces with the planned commercial and office to the west, it should not be fronted by back-of-house type features such as carriage garages or large walled-off patios. It should be pedestrian-oriented, providing gaps in which the pedestrians can traverse between the commercial and the residential parcel. So staff has evaluated the impacts of this proposed zoning to the greater community, and with no major concerns being found, staff is recommending you approve a rezoning of the property from Centerscape at Palm Valley Amendment to Centerscape at Palm Valley 2020, which includes multifamily and commercial uses subject to the PAD and the stipulations. And with that, I'll sit right here for questions.
Thank you. Is the applicant here?
He is not, but he is available on the phone if needed.
Does he want to speak or just if we have a question?
I believe if you just have any questions, he'd be happy to help with that.
All right, is there any comments and questions from the public? All right, thank you. Let him enclose this public hearing. Will the City Clerk please Resolution Number 2020-2048 by title only?
Adopt Resolution. Adopt Resolution Number 2020-2048 declaring a public record those certain documents filed with the City Clerk entitled Official Supplementary Zoning Map 19-08A: Centerscape Legal Description, Centerscape at Palm Valley 2020 Planned Area Development.
Thank you. Can I have a motion a second to approve the Resolution Number 2020-2048? Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Seconds.
I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Stebb and a second from Councilman Cano. All right, open for council discussion. Councilwoman Loretano?
I just have a quick question. When you said no tobacco, that also includes vape stores, right?
Correct.
Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Stebb?
I think, just for the public who may be watching or listening, we had meetings a couple of months ago with the developer and their representatives to go over this whole plan. So this is not the first time we have seen it, so we're not going to have a lot of questions tonight because we've already seen it. I expressed support that night, and again, tonight, I think we're... It's going to be great to see that corner developed and start to see some movement there and get some office space in, less industrial, less manufacturing in there, and start getting some office space. So this is a really good opportunity for the City of Goodyear. Thanks.
Thank you for that information to the public, especially if we've just discussed it before anybody. Yes, Councilman Cano?
Well, this particular project is in my neighborhood. I'll be going by it quite a bit, and I am a big fan of the residential-commercial mix, and so I think it'll be a nice addition. I really appreciate how pedestrian-oriented it is, the amenities that have been provided to make it walkable, accessible. One question I do have, because we ran into this at the Civic Square, well, in the area there at PAD, is whether or not storage or self-storage would be permitted in this.
Storage would require a use permit, so in order to even contemplate that, they would need to come back to the city, go through the public process again, and ultimately, that would end up with P and Z in council, so.
Okay, so it could be a possibility under the commercial?
Yes.
Any other questions? Yes, Councilman Hampton?
The connectivity, it sounds good. Is the connectivity also going to the potential park that's going to be up against the freeway there, too?
Yes, so the developer would have to put in a trail that would connect to the city-owned basin there, and that would need to run up to the proposed hotel parcel that's on Bullard. So you'd get a nice connection that came out of the Wellspring Park Basin Park and go to Bullard Avenue.
Okay, good. And then, I know on the other side of the street, there's going to be another hotel.
Correct.
Or sorry, another multifamily. So along that 140...
Oh, Sparrow, Project Sparrow, the proposed Project Sparrow, yes.
Yeah, I thought there was like a 55 and older community. I thought we zoned that a couple of months ago or something like that. So having the multifamily next to the multifamily, sounds good, and there'll be connectivity between all of that, I imagine.
Correct. It's a good transition, especially with the park and the trail there.
Okay, yeah, just clarification. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, let's have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Stebb?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell? I'm sorry, Councilmember Cano? Councilmember Pazillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Will the City Clerk please read Ordinance Number 2020-1467 by title only, please?
Adopt Ordinance Number 2020-1467, conditionally amending approximately 36 acres of the Centerscape at Palm Valley Amendment Planned Area Development Pad located southwest of North 145th Avenue and West McDowell Road to the Centerscape at Palm Valley 2020 Pad, providing for non-abridgement corrections, severability, an effective date, and penalties.
Thank you. Can I have a motion a second to approve the Ordinance Number 2020-1467? Do I hear that motion?
So moved. Seconds.
I heard a motion from Councilman Campbell and a second from Councilman Loretano. Open for council discussion? No discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Stebb?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cano?
Aye.
Councilmember Pazillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Well, let's go on to the next public hearing is for FY 2021: Truth and Taxation and Final Budget Adoption: Improve the Truth and Taxation Increase. I'm opening a public hearing. Finance Manager and Budget Researcher Lori Wigan-Rock presenting. Lori?
Thank you. All righty, so just as a reminder, this presentation is both for the current item and the next item on the agenda. The initial step is to hold the public hearing for both the budget adoption and for the truth and taxation. I'll go through the presentation. You take any public comment. We'll have you close the public hearing. You'll approve the truth and taxation increase, if that's what you desire. Then you have to go through that meeting in the meeting and hold a special meeting in order to adopt the budget as we move forward. So just a quick overview of the budget. The budget is, remains at $599.4 million. It's the same budget that you approved as the tentative budget. And so, no changes, same information. There's one slight change. If you look in the detail of the legal forms that the state requires, we had a couple asset management funds that the numbers were reversed in, so we fixed those, but it didn't change the budget in any way. This budget, a large, very large portion, almost 60% of this budget is allocated to capital projects. We have some big capital projects going on. I'll do a few highlights of those as well. Just as a reminder, the base budget is reflected in this... The base budget, which is continuing the current services, the current positions that the city has, all continue in this budget. We also have the salary increases that were discussed previously, including those negotiated in MOUs with police and fire and the 2.5% ongoing increase for the non-represented staff. And we're adding the capital project, the cost to operate the capital projects that are currently under construction for the recreation campus, two fire stations, and some water and wastewater projects. Some of the highlights are, you know, as we've dealt with the COVID and that impact on our revenue estimates, the budget does focus on obligations and things that we feel we must do. It does support growth. We continue to experience growth here in our community. And we do anticipate mid-year adds related to the development areas. We only funded those for about three months in this budget recommendation, so we would anticipate coming back to talk to you about that. And then, as you recall, we've included a special general fund contingency over and above the 15% of ongoing revenue general fund contingency. We do anticipate that that contingency will be spent during the year. We just ask that you set those funds aside and not commit them to anything at this point in time to give us more time to experience what happens to our revenue as a result of some of the pandemic-related activities. The budget adds 40.2 positions. Nearly all of those are associated, other than some in the water and wastewater areas to support their operation, are associated with the recreation campus. And that will be opening later, late in the fiscal year. The five-year CIP includes continuation of the recreation campus, those fire stations I mentioned. The surface water project will be ongoing in '21 and then into '22, as will the Civic Square project. So all of those are projects that are in process this year and will continue to move forward. Some exciting new projects that will be starting in next year include designing the expansion of the police operations facility, starting the design of a new fire station in West Goodyear. We've been talking for a couple of years about converting the street lighting to LED, so that's included in this coming budget to be financed by the savings in the utility expense, the electricity expense for the street lighting. And then we'll be inquiring some land and doing design and branding Bullard Avenue. And that's just some examples of some of the projects. The CIP continues as it was a year ago with some additions and minor changes. So that's kind of an overview of the budget. The other part of this public hearing is related to truth and taxation. There is the... I'll start by giving you background. Property tax, you've adopted some financial policies that are designed to keep the city stable and conservative and able to pay our bills, not only today, but in the future. As part of that, your policies call for maintaining a diverse and stable revenue stream. Property tax is one of the most stable revenue streams that the city has in the general fund area. Your policies also call for levying the maximum allowable primary property tax, and that is what truth and taxation is about. We're allowed by statute and state constitution to grow our property tax levy for primary purposes by 2% per year. And the primary supports the ongoing general fund budget, so it pays for day-to-day operations of the city. And then the last financial policy specifically related to property tax is that the combined rate won't exceed $1.74. And so what that does is we cannot issue new bonds if you want to do more capital projects that would be geo-bond-supported, if that would cause the combined property tax rate between the primary and secondary to go higher than $1.74. So we forecast out those needs and plan the capital program around the ability to stay within that constraint.
I think the questions will wait. You're not finished yet.
No, I'm not finished yet.
Let's wait, okay?
So, as I mentioned, the Constitution limits us to growing by no more than 2% our primary property tax levy. The state statute does require a truth and taxation process to identify any amount that you're increasing your levy above the same amount that you levied. So whatever we levied in '20 plus new construction, if we levied that or less, we would not be required to do truth and taxation. But because we take advantage of that 2% growth in our primary property tax, we are required to go through the truth and taxation process. So for '21, that truth and taxation is a $207,437 increase in our total property tax levy. This kind of walks you through how our property tax levy for primary purposes is calculated. You'll see that this year's levy is just shy of $9.8 million. We then have applied the new tax to the existing properties. Then our properties, existing properties grew by 4.9%, so we show the growth in our property tax rate that's coming from that. And then new constructions added to the roll are adding $630, almost $633,000 to our levy. And then there is that $207,000 associated with truth and taxation. So that makes our primary levy $10,608,060, and that rate is $1.33. This just shows you our total levies, and again, we'll be doing the actual levies next year, I mean, in two weeks. And the secondary is unrelated to truth and taxation, but we want to show you that we're in compliance with that financial policy, that the combined rate remains at a 1.7335, so it's below that $1.74 amount, and the secondary pays for debt service. This provides you information on the average residential property in Goodyear. So the first column information there shows you the market-based assessed valuation, so that's what they used to call full cash. And that is... It is showing you that in the current year, in 2020, the average home is valued at $237,800 in terms of assessed valuation. And again, that says market-based. It does not mean market value, but it's the market-based assessed valuation that property tax is applied, that is used in property tax. And that same average, the average has gone up by $14,900 or about 6.3%. The tax base is applied on what's called the limited assessed valuation, and that has a constraint that it cannot grow by more than 5% on an individual property. So you'll see that the average grew by $9,123 or 5%. So that's in, those two numbers show you that values of property in Goodyear are growing more quickly than the constraint, the 5% constraint. So if you continue across, we're going to, we're showing what the primary levy would be, or excuse me, the primary tax and the secondary tax on the average home for Goodyear taxes would be. So on the bottom there, the primary property tax on the average home is going up about $4.15 for the year, and the secondary is going up by $11.72 for a total increase of $15.87. The bulk of that increase is related to the secondary property tax, which would be paying for debt service on capital projects like Recreation Campus and fire stations and those types of projects. We did go through the required steps to notify the public about this public hearing for both the budget and the truth and taxation. We also put the budget overview that we presented to you with the tentative budget on our website. So we did that on June 9. And then there's been a series of newspaper advertisements and publications and a press release and placing some budget materials in the library and the city clerk. So again, the actions for today would be that you'd take the public comment on both truth and taxation and the budget. We close the hearing. On the first agenda item, you'll be... On the first agenda item, you'll be approving a truth and taxation increase. And then you'll go on to the next item and do the special meeting to approve the budget.
Thank you, thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from the public?
Yes, Mayor, I do have three.
All right.
So the first one is from Janice Wagner. "I am opposed to any increase in our property taxes. With all of the new industry and corporations taking root in Goodyear, they should be absorbing any need for an increase, not the individuals. That is how it is supposed to work. Don't put the burden on the backs of the little guy. If we are to live with the increase in traffic and pollution, we should not also have to live with an increase in our property tax. Please pass this on to the hearing on property tax increases as it is not safe for me to go there." Thank you, Janice Wagner. And then from Kristin May. "Thank you for reading my email, council members. This has been a difficult few months for many of us. I was laid off pre-COVID madness. I have not been able to find a same or better paying job in the last six months. I'm down to my last couple hundred dollars and struggling with my optimism. Raising property taxes now would be detrimental to many, not just myself. Many of us are struggling in some way, shape, or form, and are trying to keep our heads above water as it is. I am sad to know that this is even an issue of discussion at this strange time in our society. Please vote no to raising property taxes at this time. Put it on hold for a year. It is going to take some of us that long to recover. I thank you for your time and consideration." Kristin May. And then from Jen Barber. "Dear Mayor Lord and members of the council, a petition has circled with nearly 300 signatures respectfully asking that you do not raise the property tax in 2020, the year of the pandemic. You may view the petition at http://chng.it/2lqq6y6sp2." Thank you, Jennifer Barber.
That's it. All right, thank you very much. I'm going to close this public hearing. Can I have a motion, a second, to approve the truth in taxation increase of $207,437 for the fiscal year 2020-2021? Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right, Councilman Hampton voted a motion. Second was Vice Mayor Stip. Roll call, open for council discussion. Whoops. I knew you'd come over and probably swap me. Vice Mayor has the floor.
You know, every year we have this exact same discussion. And Councilmember Pizzillo and I have the exact same argument, however.
You do.
We are both saying exactly the same thing from how this position, how the situation is. Is it's not, it's not necessarily about the rate and it's not necessarily all about the levy. But in this particular case, we are not raising the taxes. Our rate has remained the same. The thing that is increasing is our property value, which thereby increases our levy. If we do nothing, we do nothing to the rate, property taxes are going to go up. If we try to reduce the rate to offset that increase, that has a ripple effect of gigantic proportions as we, it just, it just gets worse every single year as we move on. It's the, it's the flaw and the benefit of the design of our property tax system in the state of Arizona. So I know that the petition and the folks that think we are raising taxes, I think we owe the community, year after year after year, we owe them an explanation before this happens and after this happens, to try to explain it. If you sit down with somebody and you actually explain how it works, they completely get it. And we have to do it every single year. So it, this isn't a matter of raising taxes, saying yes or saying no. If Lori, I think you had a slide that showed the property value and, I think it was the other one, that one. Nope. Go too forward, I think.
This one?
That one. The total Goodyear property tax for this calendar, for the calendar year 2020 was $316. I think my property tax at my house was $1,800, something like that. The other $1,500 came from elsewhere. It didn't come from the city. So this one slide alone, for those that are looking at this from home, this should tell you about where we're at. The amount of the change that comes across the bottom there, which in total is $15.87, is a result of the increase in the valuation of the property, not in a change in the rate. It's kind of that simple. So please don't think we're raising the taxes. I have said a number of times, and even personally, I think we all have celebrated, if you look at the number of capital projects that we are embarked on, City Hall, Rec Center, road improvements, a number of fire stations that are under construction, and we have not raised the property tax rate at all. That's what we should be celebrating as citizens of this community, that we're able to do these things. We're able to grow the community without putting it on the backs of the residents and that we are taking advantage of the industrial growth and the, and the manufacturing growth that we've had. So I think it's a little bit, it's a matter of education. And I, I'm begging that we, as a, as a city, put together a really good, comprehensive, try to explain how this whole situation works. And I would say to any resident, send me an email. I will come out and meet with you and explain it myself. But please don't think we're raising taxes because that is absolutely not the case.
Thank you. I think Councilman Pizzillo has raised his hand first. Councilman Pizzillo?
You know, trying to understand property taxes can be quite challenging. I like to try to compare mine with Bill's or even Sherry's, but we can't. Why? Because there's so many variables in this. I'll give you an example. I pulled mine up. There's 21 separate taxing units on my bill. 21, which includes school districts, college districts. Wesmac also includes the city of Goodyear, includes the county, includes various special districts. If you're in a CFD, not in a CFD, if you're in some type of the water assurance districts. The point I'm getting at, when I looked at mine, 50% of my tax bill is schools. So depending on what they're doing is going to have the biggest hit on anybody's taxes. That's 50%. I looked at mine and did my calculation. My calculation comes up 12% of the entire taxes is the city of Goodyear, as this thing is showing. But you've got to keep in mind, on this, this is a good graph here, is that that $15 on the average, and actually mine's a little higher. Mine's pushing closer to $300,000 than this. I got a $3,600 bill total. Is that $15.87 is for debt service. That we need to cover the debt for all these capital projects. So that's going to be there regardless, okay? The second one is $4.15 on this example total. Now, I guess you can divide it by 12 to figure out what that cost is actually on your bill because that's what the impact would be on this primary. But the reason why we maxed the primary and we offset it with the secondary, which actually reduces the amount of debt service that we can do, because the primary you can use for anything. You can use for public safety, you can use for roads, you can use for your general operation. The secondary can only be used for debt service, okay? So by maximizing that each year, we're shifting the revenues, some things that we can use for a variety of things in the city, but it does ultimately impact the debt service. Now, if I recall, our total assessed valuation, what is it, peaked in what, 2008? And are we there yet? Are we just a little over that?
Yeah, we have now, Councilmember, we have now exceeded the peak with our current assessed valuations.
By slightly, quite a bit?
Just slightly, not, not a lot more, but we have, we have exceeded.
But you've got to go down, back all the way to 2008 to be comparing apples and apples here, because as of the Great Recession, we lost all of that. So, you know, I'm suggesting that with that $4.15 for maintaining operations in, keep us consistent with the policy we have to maximize primary and reduce the rates on the secondary. Because keep in mind, the secondary can only be used for debt service. So even if we kept that, we still, you're looking at $4.15 on the average. And I think those little bits, and again, I'm willing to kick in that to cover our operating and maintain the high level of service that our constituents out there expect of us. And especially, I can appreciate the challenges that are going out there right now. But at the same token, the city's having challenges to try to maintain its service to you, to maintain those high levels. And I can appreciate the burden, but we're talking really the $4.15. And again, if you're really looking at the taxes, you may want to look at your school districts because that's 50% of your bill. At least it's 50% of my bill. And I have no idea what they're doing this year. But that's where the vast majority of your taxes come from. That's it for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Laura Tauner?
I, I don't think I can say it much better than Councilmember Pizzillo and Councilmember Stip because I think this is a misunderstanding like Councilmember Stip said we have every single year. A couple of years, we've actually put stuff in the, in focus or on the website that explains this is your, this is your tax bill. This is where this comes from. This is the city's. And I think that's a great educational tool to show people we are not raising the taxes. In fact, the legislature put a limit in the appreciation of the value. So if your house exceeds the 2%, you're not paying on that amount. So property taxes are very unique in how they're calculated and the truth in taxation and how they're publicized. Don't always give the whole picture that it's not a tax increase here. So I would like if we could get something out like we did a couple of years ago that kind of sets the bill out and explains it to the public what it is. And I think that, we kind of have, should do that every year, I think. Just make that a part of the spring in focus so people know when they come and their bills come out. Because I know, you know, twice a year, I pay my, pay my bill, write the check out for it, give it to the county. And when you do look at it, you're like, there's Wesmac, there's this, there's Iam Estrella. So we have the, the CFD. And so there's a lot of things on that bill that I think we need to explain so people can actually look at their bill. Because some of those property tax bills, they're just paid through your mortgage. So you don't really get to see what it is. You see a truth and taxation in the paper. It, you know, it can be a little not clear the way the law is stated that, what is on your bill? Because if your mortgage is paid, you may not pull it, like Joe did, and, and look at it per se. So I think that's important to get that out to the people and make sure that we educate what we're doing so they know that their taxes aren't being raised, that the rate is the same, and that's just the increase in the levy, which is the increase in the value of the property. I think I said that right.
Well, your suggestion about bringing back that, it was good and, and it was understandable for people. And they also had it to, to refer to. So when you're having these conversations in your groups and you're talking about it and the influx of people from all over the United States, everybody does it a little different. You know, we're a sales tax state, so it's a little more, it's difficult for some of them to understand. And when they see one penny, you know, they don't. But if you look over all the municipalities throughout the United States, have people I know from New Jersey and New York, and you can name, and not just those big cities, some of the smaller cities, I think because of the misunderstanding, they lay it to us that, hey, the taxes are high. On this side, comments? Yes, Councilman Campbell?
I was just going to say, a lot of us forget that when the school districts come to us and ask for an override, that's automatically, and it passes, that automatically raises our taxes. And that money does not come to our city.
Right.
To do all that we need to do. And I know that our residents have been asking for this recreation center for years. And it's something that we need to do for them, to use their money wisely that way, as well as provide public safety protection for them with additional fire stations and police services. So it's so easy when you look at your total saying, oh, the city raised my taxes from last year because you see it that way, but you really don't get into your tax bill to see. It's everything else. It's the county health, it's the Maricopa Library District, it's this, it's that. So we're doing, I think, a great job managing the money of this city and we are not raising the taxes.
Councilman Kano, do you have something you want to add?
No, I just want to just add that our practice of good and sound conservative financial policies is really keeping us in good stead as we are moving forward. And, and it is just really pretty miraculous to think that we're able to undertake all of these capital improvement projects at this time that will really enhance our city and continue to make it a destination where people want to live and people want to work.
Absolutely. Councilman Hampton?
Everybody said it pretty well. So I, I do agree, we're not raising taxes. The rate, I think, to Bill's point, we should put that history in there that since 2008, we've just barely hit it. And also that we haven't raised the tax. The rate has stayed the same since the last 10 years or so, so roughly. And so, so yeah, so just, I think that's a good historical point for people to see. And the reason it's going up is because the property, your value of your house is going up. So it's a good thing, so.
Right. Well, there's a reason why people are moving here.
Yeah, yeah.
And the reason is the quality of life. It's the safety of living in Goodyear. And it's the excitement of creations and new businesses coming and building, new communities. It's really exciting. And when you think of all the things that are going to be out of the ground between now and next year, I mean, it's just amazing. And so what I would like them to, you know, feel that, take pride in your city. We all have to contribute in life. And, and I know, I can understand the people that are my age and Wally's age in your retirement times, and, and it's tough sometimes to meet those obligations. And to the people that have lost their jobs, we are still sympathetic to that. And that's the reason, a good reason, why we're bringing these companies in. In this next year, there's going to be a number of companies that are going to settle in Goodyear. Some of the building will be done. And I know you have to transition to other work and that's difficult. But I'm telling you, you're going to get a job in Goodyear. And we're all working on it, our staff, our city manager, everybody. So we have to think of the advantages of having to pay taxes. Would that come some really good things? So anybody else want to comment? Okay, I always talk too far and I have to look where I am. Okay, here we go. All right, so now we can do a roll call. Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kano?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Laura Tauner?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
I will now recess the regular, regular meeting and open a special meeting pursuant to the ARS 42-17105. So I will now open the special meeting to determine and adopt the estimates of the proposed expenditures for their purpose stated in the published proposal. Everyone is present. We will now consider the final adoption of FY 2021. Laura?
The presentation was contained in the last one, so.
Thank you. All right, so are there any questions and comments from the public?
Not on this item, Mayor.
Not at this time. We appreciate that. Will the city clerk please read Resolution Number 2020-2036 by title only?
Adopt Resolution Number 2020-2036, Determining and Adopting the Final Estimates of Proposed Revenues and Expenditures by the City of Goodyear for Fiscal Year 2021, Beginning July 1, 2020, and Ending June 30, 2021.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion, a second, to approve Resolution 2020-2036? Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
I heard a motion from Councilman Hampton and a second from Councilwoman Pizzillo. Open for council discussion? Yes, Councilwoman Pizzillo?
First of all, I want to congratulate staff, city manager, everybody who helped put this together. I look back when we first got on board back in, in '09, where we were way upside down. And there were some policies that probably were lacking. But since then, you know, I think we've done, and staff has done, and this council has done a great job in coming up with some very conservative policies that have put us in this position. In fact, when you came across and did your estimates, you were very conservative on that. It's my understanding that you might even beat those conservative estimates when your new numbers come in. And that's, hence why we put aside those appropriations that was it, 17, is it 17 million?
17.1 million dollars.
In case, because state law requires if you don't budget, you can't spend it. So if our revenues come true, that we think they are, So if our revenues come true, that we think they are, we're not setting it out there automatically, we're setting it aside that the council will revisit at that time if they happen to pan out. But if it hasn't for our replacement funds, for our sinking funds on our ballpark, and several other things that we've done from a very fiscally conservative manner, I don't think we'd be in the position we are today to weather this storm. And we don't know where this storm is all going to go yet. So again, I want to thank staff, management, council, who had the vision of putting these things together for getting us to where we are, because I truly believe it's put us in a great position going forward.
Absolutely, I agree with you. Any other comments? Vice Mayor Stip?
You know, I was going to leave it, but I, I have a very close relationship with one of the International City Manager Association senior mentors. And we were talking about what we're doing in Goodyear as far as finances and how's it, how's it going to be, and explained to him the systems that we've put in place and the, the great work by the manager and by the finance department to, and the staff to get us really in a position where we can weather this storm and, and move forward. And he was absolutely shocked that, that we were not talking about major staff reductions and major, major cuts, and really was very, very complimentary of the work that, that we've done. And I don't, it's one thing to say we're not raising taxes and we're doing all, all this other stuff. And I don't know that anybody but probably the people sitting in this room really appreciate what a big deal, what a really big deal this is. And, and I'm, generally, I think if you go back over the last nine years, I've probably only voted maybe three times in favor of the budget. But I will, I will for this one, simply because we are finally, in my, where I'm at, I'm finally to the point where I think we've got it really well wrestled and we've got it under control. So to Lori and Doug and Julie and everybody really, because it, it goes all the way down to the folks that are deciding whether to use the, use the piece of equipment or not. We've done a great job and we should all be very, very thankful.
Well, the one thing nice to wrap up this, when, when people question this, there, the doors are open to come and meet with staff. The, the files are there from the past years, the numbers are there. So it's all out, it's out there for people to read and to consider and, and try to understand. So I just want the public to know that just because we're passing this today, this evening, doesn't mean you can't come in and ask questions and better understand it. I find it, I found it very difficult beginning to understand the budget. And, and I've been doing this for quite a number of years now. And you have people on the council that, the explanations are excellent. So thank you, each and every one of you that are very familiar with working with budgets and have worked them professionally. So it is a tribute to you and it helps everybody that's listening and will be. So I think we're ready to do a roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Cano?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Laura Tano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right. But there's no further business to consider. I am now adjourned this special meeting. And I'm, before I reconvene this, the regular meeting, do we have an idea of the break so they get something to eat? Or should I start, open this and, and, let's get the voters.
It's up to you, Mayor. If you're ready to take a break, you can just recess.
All right, I'm going to ask council, do you want to take a little bit of break and have your dinner? No, all right? You want to go on? Okay. So I'm now going to reconvene the regular meeting. I'd like to remind council to wait for a motion a second before the discussions. The next item on business is consider approving the intergovernmental agreements with Maricopa County and the City of Glendale for the operation and maintenance of Camelback Road from Perryville Road to Citrus Road, and with Maricopa County for the traffic signals at Camelback and Perryville Road, city traffic. Oh, here's our guy, engineer Luke Albert. Albert, it's nice to, Mr. Albert, it's nice to see you tonight. Some people might have some words for you tonight.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll wait a second for the presentation to get loaded, or do I need? Yep, I need to load it, I guess. Oh, I think two of us are controlling it now. Okay. Okay, so, so for the next two agenda items, I'm going to cover a total of three intergovernmental agreements. And for this first agenda item, it's an intergovernmental agreement on Camelback Road between Perryville Road and Citrus Road, and also for the traffic signal at Camelback Road and Perryville Road. The first agreement is between Goodyear, Maricopa County and Glendale, and it's for Camelback Road between Perryville Road and Citrus Road. And the second one is between Goodyear and Maricopa County, and that's for a CIP project, for the traffic signal at Camelback Road and Perryville Road. Shown on this map are the, on the, on the west side, or the left side of the graphic, are these two projects. The traffic signal is in blue and the roadway improvements are in red. And then I've also identified these three private development projects that we've talked a lot about recently, the Cross Dock Project, the Alseth 303 Project, and the Camelback Center Project. So that, these two projects are on the other side of 303 from those projects. Okay, this graphic shows the Camelback Road looking west, west of Citrus Road. And, and as you can see from the, the right side of the road there, this is where it's currently in, in poor condition. It's currently maintained by Goodyear as well. So this graphic shows the Azure Canyon Development, which is a county, a single-family residential development on, on the north side of Camelback Road between Perryville Road and 181st Avenue. And, and they're going to improve the north half of Camelback Road from Perryville Road to 181st. They're also making some improvements in county right-of-way between, along Perryville Road and also on 181st Avenue. And, and shown at the bottom of this slide, which we'll talk in more detail in the next slide, are the cross-sections for Camelback Road and Perryville Road, and we'll look more closely at the Camelback Road cross-section on the next slide. To advance the slide here. Okay, this graphic shows the cross-section looking west on Camelback Road between Perryville Road and Citrus Road. In the, in the green area is, is the Goodyear right-of-way, which is a total of 88 feet of right-of-way. We have 65 feet on the south half, a lot of which was dedicated by the Sadea Development, and they're working on improvements right now. And then we have 23 feet on, north of the center line. And then there's the, in yellow is the 10-foot Glendale Strip Annex that we've talked quite a bit about in previous discussions. And then north of the Glendale Strip to the right, on the far right side, there's 12 feet of existing county right-of-way, and there's an additional 20 feet of right-of-way being dedicated by the Azure Canyon Development. So that'll be a total of, you know, 65 feet south of the center line, and 65 feet north of the center line for the full three-lane in each direction roadway segment when this is completed. So the, the key terms for the Camelback Road IGA from Perryville Road to Citrus Road are that the improvements between Perryville Road and 181st Avenue will be developed to city Goodyear standards by the developer. That's the, the north half improvements. The, the underlying ownership of the right-of-way, we cannot annex across the strip annex, so the underlying ownership of the right-of-way will be conveyed to, to Goodyear by Glendale and Maricopa County, as well as Goodyear will be responsible for the operation and maintenance of Camelback Road. And there's two T-intersections that we expect to be signalized along this corridor. There's the traffic signal at 181st, a future traffic signal at 181st Avenue and Camelback Road. And that one is responsible by Maricopa County, because it only serves county development and residents. And then the traffic signal at Sadea Parkway and Camelback Road is a T-intersection that will serve Goodyear residents in Sadea, so that's Goodyear's responsibility. And Meritage Homes did pay for a share of that traffic signal in 2017 as part of the So then for the IGA for the traffic signal at Camelback Road and Perryville Road, it's a cost-sharing agreement. The estimated cost is estimated 611,500 with Goodyear and McDot each responsible, or the county each responsible for 50%. Because each agency has two legs of the intersection, so there's a 50-50 cost share. Traffic signal be constructed to Goodyear standards, which in this area is the ADOT standard traffic signal poles. And then Goodyear is responsible for the operation and maintenance of the traffic signal, just for some continuity and consistency along the corridor. Mayor, council, I recommend adoption of Resolution 2020-2053, conditionally approving two intergovernmental agreements, the one for Camelback Road from Perryville to Citrus, and also the intergovernmental agreement for the traffic signal and CIP project. And with that, I'd like to open up for, answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for?
No, Mayor.
No. Okay. Well, the city clerk, please, please read Resolution Number 2020-2053 by title only.
Adopt Resolution Number 2020-2053, conditionally approving an intergovernmental agreement with Maricopa County and the City of Glendale for the operation and maintenance of Camelback Road from Perryville Road to Citrus Road, and approving an intergovernmental agreement with Maricopa County for the traffic signal at Camelback Road and Perryville Road, providing direction and terms for revocation of the approval of the intergovernmental agreement with Maricopa County and the City of Glendale for the operation and maintenance of Camelback Road from Perryville Road to Citrus Road, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Can I have a motion a second to approve Resolution Number 2020-2053?
Still moved.
Second.
A motion from Councilwoman Pizzillo and a second from Vice Mayor Stip. Open for council discussion. Wow, let's start back here. Did, did you have your hand up? No, okay, Councilman Campbell.
Luke, on this? Whatever one you have. So I get that we're going to put a traffic signal at Perryville Road and Camelback, because there's a stop sign there now. Is this the 183rd? Is, is, um... There going to be a, a traffic signal that's going to help that housing development get out?
Mayor Lord, Councilmember Campbell, when, when warranted, the traffic signal, so there's a traffic signal potentially for Sadea, which is, Sadea Parkway is over here, serving the Sadea Development, and then over here is the 181st Avenue Development, or 181st Avenue Road. And, and both of those would get signalized when, when warranted.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, my 183 is cut off of my map that I printed off of the city map site.
Okay, yeah, it's, it's this alignment, this roadway right here is 181st Avenue.
All right. And is it, is it to take care of the development that's proposed there, plus the other development that's existing?
Exactly. There's an existing development that accesses it, but right now, does it connect that existing, there's homes that are existing, but that road right now doesn't connect to Camelback, but it will connect to Camelback here. And then both these developments will use that road to get down to Camelback Road. And it certainly would be signalized, we certainly talked to the county about that, and it would be entirely their responsibility, because it would never have a south leg into Goodyear.
Okay, good. It just, just looking at it for safety purposes, it would be extremely difficult to go westbound out of either one of those intersections without a light, depending on the, the amount of traffic that's on there. So thank you for bringing this forward.
Absolutely.
Councilman Laura Tano?
First of all, I want to thank you for the great presentation, and I'm glad that Camelback's getting some much-needed attention for those residents, so thank you. But more importantly, I want to thank you for all your hard work and your dedication to the city and the citizens here in Goodyear, and you will truly be missed. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next? Councilwoman Pizzillo?
Refresh my memory, Luke, where's the money coming from?
Sorry, what was your question, Mr. Councilmember Pizzillo?
Yeah, just refresh my memory, where's the money coming from?
It, so, Mayor Lord, Councilmember Pizzillo, it's, it's in the CIP right now. I mean, it's sort of the, I guess first, all the roadway improvements are the developer's responsibility and 100% their cost for the north half street improvements between 181st and, and Perryville. And then the traffic signal is currently in the CIP and is generally funded.
So the, the money that would be coming from us is currently in the CIP?
Currently in the CIP. It's, it's designed in, in '21 and construction '22 in this CIP that was just, the budget that was just adopted.
I just want to make sure, thank you.
Any other questions? Vice Mayor Stip?
I was asking if, are we giving Luke our accolades now?
Well, I want to look towards the city manager and find that out, because...
That's what I'm wanting, I'm like, are we doing this now?
I don't want, I don't want to, I don't want to take her steam away.
Yeah, I don't either, but I think for those that obviously have known Luke for a very long time, you've been here and you've, you've built our traffic system and a lot of our roadway, you know, pieces and parts. So your, your fingerprints will forever be on the community. As usual, I have always challenged you to be the absolute best and to get us to where we needed to go, and you've always been responsive. And this community, like I said, will always be shaped in a very positive way going forward thanks to you and your efforts. So good luck to you in, in Texas, and, you know, bless your family and just the best of luck to you. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Next, comments? Well, I have to say, not only are we going to miss you, there are citizens that depend on you. I won't name those particular people, but we have, you have been inundated with, you know, a couple of the individuals in Goodyear who constantly question, and that's good. That's, that's what we're here for, you know? No criticism toward them. In fact, that always pleases me to know that our citizens know what's going, or want to know what's going on in their city, and how they feel personally it should be done. But you just have a way with returning comments to them and explaining to them. And so they're going to miss you, and we're going to miss you. There's been so many times in so many communities, even on Camelback, there was, we're back to speaking about Camelback, that you showed up and you talked to the people and you made them feel at ease. So, you know, it, it's, not everybody can do that. So God gave you this special talent. And so I know you're going to do, actually perform when you end up at the university. And I, we really don't know what you're going to do, I just found that you were going there. So, but it'll probably be a wonderful experience, and I think you'll have a lot of things to talk about what you've learned working for this city.
Absolutely, yeah. I'm, I'm returning to my employer from 1995 to 2000, when I moved out to Arizona. I'm returning back to, to where I worked before, which is the transportation, more transportation research than operations, like I do more up here. So it'll be a, a good, an interesting change, but certainly all the city experiences will, will, that I've gained over the years will certainly benefit me there, for sure.
Well, we'll always say you're ours. So if you get those accolades, you're going to see us putting our hand up and say, oh, we knew him when. So, any other thing? Okay, so I think we're about ready to, because I got lost again, vote on a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Laura Tano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right. The next on 16, on the business items, to consider approving an intergovernmental agreement with Maricopa County for the installation of the traffic signal at the intersection of Camelback Road and Saraval. Of course, Luke Albert, our city traffic engineer, presenting.
So, Mayor, council, so this is an intergovernmental agreement similar to the one at Camelback and Perryville. It's a traffic signal at Camelback and Saraval. And it, this, this agreement is just, obviously between Goodyear and Maricopa County, cost-sharing agreement for the traffic signal. This slide shows the location of the traffic signal. It, it's on the, in, in the same three developments, the Cross Dock, the Alseth 303, and the Camelback Center. It's actually on the, oops, it's actually on the northwest corner of the Camelback Center Development, which is also the northeast corner of the PV 303 development there that has UPS in that Boeing and in the vacant parcel to the north. This is a view of the intersection on the east leg looking west. This is a view of the intersection on the east leg looking west. This project's estimated at six hundred and four thousand nine hundred dollars. It's also in the CIP, similar to the other one, it's a FY twenty-one design, FY twenty-two construction. Goodyear has three legs of the intersection, Maricopa County or McDot has one leg of responsibility, so that's the reason for the seventy-five twenty-five cost split for this one. It's also going to be constructed to Goodyear standards, which is the, also here is the ADOT style traffic signal, and then Goodyear is responsible of the operation and maintenance of the traffic signal. So I recommend adopting Resolution two zero two zero dash two zero six three, approving the intergovernmental agreement with the Maricopa County Department of Transportation for the traffic signal at Camelback Road and Saraval Avenue.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the public?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Will the city clerk please read Resolution twenty twenty dash twenty sixty-three by title only?
Adopt Resolution number twenty twenty dash twenty sixty-three, approving an intergovernmental agreement with Maricopa County for installation of a traffic signal at the intersection of Camelback Road and Saraval Avenue, providing authorization, direction, and an effective date.
Thank you. Can I have a motion a second to approve Resolution number twenty twenty dash twenty sixty-three? Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I heard a motion from Council, I'm sorry, Keno, and a second from Councilman Hampton. All right, open for council discussion. Councilman Campbell.
Luke? I'm sorry, I forgot to ask this with the other order of business, and it also includes us. So these three new traffic signals that we're going to propose, are we going to make them actually work, or are we going to build them and cover them up?
They're going to be activated as soon as they're complete, for sure.
Good, okay, thank you very much.
Very much needed.
Councilman Stip?
Vice Mayor Stip?
Luke, a couple of weeks ago, we had this discussion about this portion of Camelback Road from three oh three east to Litchfield Road. Are we going to do a traffic signal and then come in and then tear up that road and reconstruct that intersection?
So Mayor Lord, Vice Mayor Stip, we're certainly going to do everything we can first with the, I mean, with the traffic signal to get the poles in their ultimate locations, so that we can get poles installed that don't have to be moved later, but we certainly need the traffic signal as quickly as we can finish design and construction, which is inevitably going to be ahead of getting a full roadway improvement project on that corridor, so we'll move forward with the signal, try and get the poles their ultimate location, and minimize kind of any modifications to that as much as possible.
Okay, thanks.
Councilman Keno?
Well, the cooperation and collaboration west of, on Camelback, west of the three oh three, as evidenced by those previous items, certainly bodes well for continued cooperation, and I'm very excited to see this one coming up on Saraval, because it has been, that whole corridor is a subject of a lot of attention and concern, and I think this will be a great new beginning for making this a more passable and safer passageway. Traffic is a huge concern that all citizens have, and everybody has an opinion about it, and so, to that end, wanted to thank you also for your work, keeping us running, because it's been critical to our success.
Thank you so much.
Any other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Laura Tano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Councilmember Basillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right, let's go to the next one before I hit that item, so was it seventeen and eighteen? Okay, so you're, seventeen and eighteen will be heard together tonight. They are to consider approving the First Amendment to the CAP slash SRP Interconnection Facility Lease and Water Transportation Agreement, and approving the Groundwater Saving Facility Agreement with Roosevelt Irrigation District Water Resources and Sustainability Manager Gretchen Irwin will present. Gretchen?
Good evening, Mayor Lord and council members. I do have the two agreements to present together tonight, they are related, so we were hoping that we could save a little time. The first agreement is the First Amendment to the CAP SRP Interconnect Facility and Water Transportation Agreement. The original agreement was approved by council in January of twenty seventeen. That agreement was specific to delivering water to the surface water treatment facility. It had a specific delivery point, and it addressed the cost related to the interconnect lease, the canal and lateral delivery, transportation through those canals and laterals. It also had an administrative fee and a capacity reservation fee. So recently, we had an opportunity arise to where we could actually deliver some of our unused CAP water to another savings facility, which is my second agreement tonight, and earn long-term storage credits at that facility. It would have to be transported through the SRP system, and so we needed to clarify the cost with transporting that water through the SRP system, and then the new delivery points and measuring points. So this amendment specifies the cost for the interconnect and for the canal transportation, which is in line with our original agreement. However, it does not trigger the administrative cost or the capacity reservation cost, and so that was key to making the next agreement feasible for us. So the second agreement is the Groundwater Savings Facility Agreement between Roosevelt Irrigation District, or RID, and the City of Goodyear. This allows us to store some of our unused CAP water with RID, just like any other storage agreement we have, we are able to earn long-term storage credits. But this has some other benefits too, which makes it beneficial to the city, and that is, one of them is that we would be storing more locally than when we store with CAP. Also, we could potentially have SRP recover this water for us and deliver it through their canal system to our surface water treatment system. So it's an additional wet water supply that we could use, so there's multiple benefits to this. Another benefit that we have with this agreement is that we're going to be able to establish a new relationship with RID. They serve irrigation water to Avondale, Goodyear, and Buckeye, they've been in our community since nineteen twenty-one. It could be a very valuable relationship, and so we're really excited and looking forward to that. Recently, I saw over the past year, Barbara Chapel, Javier, and I have been reaching out to our neighbors to discuss regional water issues and look for solutions that could benefit all of us. We've been pretty successful, we've reestablished our Buckeye Irrigation District relationship, and that was one of our earlier agreements on consent. Hopefully, we can do this with RID, and then we have our new SRP relationship. So these partnerships are all helping the city with our water management and supply goals, and it's a win-win for all parties involved, so.
Wonderful, we're all excited, and it brings back the really good memories of it. Are there any comments?
No, Mayor.
All right, then can I have a motion a second to authorize and direct the city manager or her designee to take any or all actions to execute all documents necessary to carry out the First Amendment to the CAP slash SRP Interconnection Facility Lease and Water Transportation Agreement among the City of Goodyear, Salt River Valley Waters User Association, and Salt River Project Agricultural Improvement Empowered District? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Laura Tano and a second from Councilman Basillo. Open for council discussion. Councilman Laura Tano?
I want to thank you and Javier for all the hard work that you and your team do, because without water, it's not, you know, without water, we're not doing anything, so I think this is a great idea. I really like the wet water option, I think especially now, that's a good option to have, so thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome, and I do want to mention that it's not just Javier and I and Barbara. Sarah Chilton is really key to doing, she does all the heavy lifting with these agreements, so it wouldn't happen without Sarah.
Well, thank her as well. Any other comments? Yes, Councilman Hampton?
Yeah, same thing, I do appreciate the team work and working with other different, collaboration with other organizations. This is just, it'd be a great, a great thing for the city to be able to keep growing and to meet all our demand, and the timing of it's great with our, some of our new companies that have been coming to Goodyear as well, and I just really appreciate the foresight of people, you guys in the past, to set us up for success today, and then also in the future, so looking forward to more and more of these agreements, because I know this is a big first step, but I know there's a lot more in the future coming, so. So thank you to your team, thank you for being, looking outside the box and innovative. I know we're one of the first ones with this SRP being outside of their territory, so it's definitely a great thing for our city, so thank you.
Any other comments? Well, I'm excited, I was excited, I happened to be at that meeting, the original one, when we started all this. And, I mean, this was something people would always separate the two and say, no, you know, they're never going to mate. It'll always be separate, and we proved them wrong. And so, yes, staff did extraordinary work, it was complicated, and when you have so many municipalities to go through, and the interconnect, and some of my counterparts on the East Valley just couldn't quite comprehend that we were going, because I'd always heard from the, oh, you're CAP, you'll never, this is our water. And I think we had a lecture at the college from the lawyer, I can't remember his name, what was? And he gave this lecture about how we weren't going to be...
Gammage, Grady Gammage.
Yes. Gammage was his name, and we were all sitting in the audience, and so he has this map up there, and he's showing us all the water, and he's showing on the east side, and he told us how successfully we were, and then proceeded to tell us that we wouldn't be, and because we couldn't get a connect with SRP. So I think we all looked for him at the Christmas parties to try to tell him, nanny, nanny, boo boo, we made it, and we worked hard and we stuck with it, so really my admiration for staff on this one, because it was complicated, and the fact that you followed through, and here we are tonight, so thank you very much. All right, I talked too much, am I looking for a motion a second? I've got a motion, we're going to vote, there we go. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Let's go to number eighteen, can I have a motion a second to authorize and direct the city manager and her designee to take any or all actions to execute all documents necessary to carry out the groundwater facility agreement between Roosevelt Irrigation District and the City of Goodyear? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Stip and a second from Councilman Hampton. Any other discussion? All right, then let's vote on it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, the ayes have it. Thank you so much. The next item of business is consider approving the preliminary plat for the curve at Estrella Commons. So Planner Steve Corretia will present. Ms. Corretia?
I'll pull up my presentation here. That's the applicant's presentation, I was looking for the staff presentation. Seen that before.
For anybody listening to this, we're having technical difficulties. It's kind of frustrating.
So Mayor, council members, thank you for your patience, I do have the presentation available now. Though I do apologize, it's short, so.
I don't apologize, for heaven's sakes, we all make mistakes. Yeah.
But tonight's presentation, it's seven point six acres located here west of Estrella Parkway, south of Roosevelt. Spreading this property, we have the new Fulton Development going into the east, we have a new apartment complex to the south. We also have a proposed small grocer and coffee shop going to the west. To the north of the subject property is undeveloped property intended for a mix of uses, commercial and residential. Zoning is final PAD, and that PAD was before the commission and council just a couple months ago, back in April. And that PAD was for a new PAD for the development of a court home community. And so tonight's action is to follow up on that rezoning, this is the preliminary plat for that development, and it'll subdivide that seven point six acres into sixty-four lots and nine tracks. Again, it's for a single-family detached court homes. This is proposed as a rental community with private streets and the common court, the homes accessed around the court. You'll have about almost an acre of open space, a common amenity area, also with some visitor parking, because it is a court home development. And this is the conceptual landscape plan, but it does provide a good illustrative exhibit of what's going on here. We'll have the one access from Roosevelt, you'll hit the gates, and you'll have your private looped street, and you'll have the courts accessing the private looped street. Again, you've got several homes accessing around the court. We have some visitor parking here and here. We'll also have visitor parking along one side of the street, given its width. There's also several parking, visitor parking spaces that will be provided in the courts. Along with each home, we'll have a two-car garage. But again, this is the main open space right here, and from the rezoning, council did ask for a shaded tot lot, and that has been provided, so you do have the amenities now for all ages for this development, and you have several other active and passive open space. other active and passive open space areas with this development. And this is, the next two sheets are just the preliminary plat exhibit, again, just showing how this property will be subdivided, the private streets, the courts, and the lots kind of accessing that court. Our findings after reviewing this, we do find it consistent with the new PAD that was just approved back in April. We do find it consistent with our subdivision regulations. Planning and zoning commission, they heard this at their June tenth meeting. They voted five zero to forward a recommendation of approval to the council. There was no opposition voice to the subdivision at that meeting. As such, we are recommending approval of this plat, subject to fate stipulations in the staff report. With that, Mayor, that includes my staff presentation. I believe the applicant is on the line and just would like to say a few things. He doesn't have a formal presentation, but would just like to say a few things and then be available to answer any questions.
Fine, that's fine. Yeah, the city clerk, who's there?
Yes.
He's on the line?
Thank you, Steve. This is Jason Sanks, the applicant with SDG Engineering on behalf of Curve Development. Just wanted to thank staff for the presentation and the coordination thus far to get us here today. Indeed, this project was before the council just a couple months ago, and we are in substantial conformance with all of the exhibits you previewed at the time of taking the zoning action. And as Steve mentioned, we did provide the turnkey shaded tot lot in the area next to the game lawn, and we still were able to manage to keep the miniature dog park as well. So we didn't trade any amenities out for the tot lot, we were able to add it to the mix. So with that, I know it has been a longer evening tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council members may have, and I appreciate your consideration of our plat tonight.
Thank you very much. So let's go on to the motion. You have anybody else?
Yes, no, no public comments.
All right. Can I have a motion a second to approve the preliminary plat for the curve at Australia Commons, subdividing seven point six five acres into sixty-four residential lots and nine tracks generally located at the east intersection of Australia Parkway and Roosevelt Street within the curve at Australia Commons? Planned area development PAD subject to stipulation. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Stip and a second from Councilman Pizzillo. We're open for council discussion, so, yes, Councilman Loretano.
I just want to say thank you to the developer, the applicant, for adding the tot lot, so I appreciate that.
Councilman Hampton?
I just want a quick reminder, the, this entrance right here isn't the only entrance to get into all these from the north, right? There's another cut-in to get off of Roosevelt, right?
Mayor, council members, this is the main access into the development with a median break, so you can go east or west. There is another access point here, but it's restricted, so you can come in, and you could go this way, or you could come in this way.
Okay, I'm, I'm just clarifying that people coming off of Roosevelt who want to go to the grocer from the north, if they're coming in, taking the left turn into there, they can take a right-hand turn. Don't have to go through the community to get to the grocer. There's another cut-in, they can take a right-hand turn to get in.
That is correct. You do not have to enter the community to get to the grocer. You can go through this.
Okay, I thought so. I just wanted some reminder of it. That's mostly for the, to get the truck to get through there, so. Okay, thank you for the clarification. And I also appreciate the developer adding the tot lot as well. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, let's vote. For all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations. Looking forward to it, aren't we?
Thank you, Council.
The last item in business is consider adopting the wastewater master plan for the Section twenty-three, amend twenty sixteen Goodyear Integrated Water Master Plan, and terminate Cost Recovery Resolution two thousand eight dash twelve seventy-nine. Oh, hello there, Sarah. We haven't had you in a while, so, welcome. Yeah. See, that's why we like you, because you have a great sense of humor.
In two thousand eight, the city approved a wastewater plan, a master plan, and a cost recovery resolution for the improvements included in that master plan for wastewater solution for an area, a one, a one-square-mile area called Section twenty-three. That area is between Camelback on the north, Indian School on the south, and Citrus and Cotton Lane. So nothing had happened in two, since two thousand eight. The improvements have not been constructed. There's been no activity out there, and we recently had a change in ownership. The new developers and the new property owners are looking to move forward with their development. They've done a lot of intensive engineering studies, and based on these studies, they've come forward with a more cost-effective, efficient, and effective wastewater solution. So staff is supporting the solution, but because of where we are in terms of everything that's already in place, we have to kind of undo it. So the property owners have been working with the, everybody who is a party to the original agreement, all the properties that would be affected by the actions taken today. They've sent out formal notices of this public hearing. They've had many discussions just separately with, with these, with these property owners. There was a Zoom meeting. So there's been a lot of discussion for anybody who would be impacted by what's being done here. There's been no opposition to it. So what we're asking is that we kind of unwind what we did in two thousand eight, which is to adopt a new wastewater study. That new wastewater study would be incorporated into the IWMP to replace what's already existing, and to determine this, to terminate the existing cost recovery resolution.
Thank you. Have I had you read the resolution yet?
I do have a public comment.
He's got a hook. I just noticed that, so would you please, did you read it?
Not yet.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
Okay, I do have one public comment from Mr. Ed Bull. Dear Mayor Lord, council members and staff, on behalf of the owners of Abel Ranch, I request your city council's approval of June twenty-second, twenty, Agenda Item Number twenty regarding Section twenty-three wastewater-related matters in accordance with staff's recommendations for approval. As you may recall, I've had the opportunity over the years to be zoning council for Abel Ranch and certain other developments within Section twenty-three, Camelback to Indian School Road, Citrus to Cotton Lane. Over the past eight-plus months, I have also had the opportunity to work closely with a variety of city staff, engineering, planning, and legal, numerous Section twenty-three property owners and representatives, and several private consultants regarding updated wastewater sewer design and solutions for Section twenty-three. It has been a detailed and involving process, and I thank city staff, the Section twenty-three owners and representatives, and the private consultants for their ongoing work, courtesies, and solution-based approaches to getting Section twenty-three ready for development. I appreciate staff's recommendations for approval to, one, adopt the updated wastewater master plan for Section twenty-three, two, amend to twenty sixteen IWMP to bring it into compliance with the updated wastewater master plan, and three, terminate the outdated two thousand eight resolution of intent. I know that numerous Section twenty-three property owners support your council's approval of above items one through three, and conversely, I am not aware of any Section twenty-three property owners being opposed to section, to, to items one through three. We request your council's concurrence with staff's recommendations for approval. If you have questions of me or want to discuss any of the matters within Agenda Item Number twenty, I am available by phone. Otherwise, I plan to tune into your council meeting and will be available if and asked needed. Thank you very much, Ed.
Thank you. Can I have a motion a second to approve Resolution twenty twenty dash twenty seventy-four?
Mayor, I need to read the resolution first.
I don't see this, so. Adopt Resolution twenty twenty seventy-four.
I have to read it. I have to read the title first.
Okay, so why don't you just come over here and show me where you want me to, to put that vote in? Because all I have is...
It should say, will the city clerk please read Resolution Number twenty twenty dash twenty seventy-four?
I say, will the city clerk please read Resolution twenty twenty seventy-four? Last item on business?
That was a comment.
Oh, all right.
Adopt Resolution Number twenty twenty dash twenty seventy-four, adopting the wastewater master plan for Section twenty-three, improvements prepared by Hilgarth Wilson, amending the twenty sixteen City of Goodyear Integrated Wash, Water Master Plan, terminating Cost Recovery Resolution of Intention Number two thousand eight dash twelve seventy-nine, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, and thank you for the help on this team. Can I have a motion a second to approve Resolution Number twenty twenty dash twenty seventy-four?
So moved.
Second.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. So was it? Councilman Laura Tono motion, and the second was Councilman Kano. Open for council discussion? No discussion? All right, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kano?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right, we're at the end of the meeting. Does council have any comments, commendation reports on current events, or requests for future items? Councilman Campbell?
I have some, a question for the city manager. Is it time now, or is that coming up?
Well, let's see. And then I, you, I'm going to give you permission to go ahead and ask that.
Okay, I have three questions, please. I'd like to get an update on the CON. I'd like an update on identifying all the manhole and the drains and the blurred wash, and I'd also appreciate the clerk giving me a copy of Ed Bull letter, so I can understand it more. You reading it, I, I didn't get all of whatever he was saying. Thank you.
All right. Any other? All right, does the city manager have anything to report?
I might do, Mayor. Real briefly, on tonight's consent agenda was council appointments to certain subcommittees, but I wanted to further recognize that Valley Metro last Thursday did appoint Vice Mayor to what's called the Valley Metro Joint, Joint Board Subcommittee. And this subcommittee is made up of four members, two who, which, two of which who sit on the RPTA board, which one is Vice Mayor, and also the Valley Metro Rail Board. And what this board does is they work with the CEO of Valley Metro to resolve any conflicting directions between the two groups, to establish recommended goals, and conduct the evaluation of the CEO's achievements. So I just wanted to recognize that he's been appointed to that subcommittee.
Bill, we really appreciate it, okay, your knowledge and your tenaciousness, and you, you know, you're hung in there, and so we're going to be waiting to hear good things about the meetings and, and maybe progress, right?
Yeah, that's all.
Yes. Any other comments? All right, the next, the next will be a regular meeting on Monday, July sixth, two thousand twenty. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.